Much better.
Welcome, everybody, to Roxland, Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission for March 9, 2021. We'll have a court order. Rob will start with you.
Rob Horgan.
John Smolig.
Andy Engel.
Dan Fitch.
I'm here. Olivia Cody.
Sierra. You gotta unmute Sierra. Was that you that just said?
Am I next time? Was I after? Sorry, no, for next time.
Say your name.
Sierra Lord Leon. I didn't know if I go after because I'm an alternate after all the main.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. Okay.
Lenora, hi.
Hi, everyone.
So why we do a court order is we see who's here and when we do it before every meeting, we have three new members. So I'm just explaining this for them. We do it before every meeting and you just say your name so it's on the record who's here. Voting members, there's five of us. It's me, Rob, Andy, Sue, and John. Three alternates, Lenora, Sierra, and Olivia. To the alternates, you during deliberations, you could ask questions. You're part of the commission. Sierra was sworn in, so she's part of the commission. But once a motion is made, you can no longer be involved. On the cease and desist order, you could all be involved. So for the cease and desist, I'm going to seat the regular members. And then when we get to the deliberation on the woods, I'm only going to seat four members because those are the members who were at every public hearing, everything. It's me, Andy, Sue, and Rob. Okay. So new business cease and desist order against Fran Hodges, Eight Chalobes Road, excavating within regulated area. Let me explain to the new members on the board. Usually we give notice of violations, which are very informal ways of saying you violated a wetland regulation. Please come to the next meeting. Let's work this out, which we did the last meeting.
I just have a question about that. So does that go to the homeowner or the person who's actually doing the work or both?
Both.
Sierra, could you tone down your volume? You're really blessed, at least at this end. I don't know if it's me or.
Oh, I am. I don't, the volume on my end affects you?
Yeah.
You're really loud.
It's okay. I like loud. I can't hear.
Okay, is that better?
Yep.
Okay.
It depends, Sierra. It's up to the commission. Usually we always go right to the property owner, to the person who's creating the violation. We have the right under the law to fine both the owner and the contractor. Notice of violation is a basically a friendly way of saying you made a mistake. Come before us. If you come before us, we work it out. A cease and desist is more legal. It becomes, if we issue a cease and desist, in other words, you need to stop what you're doing until you come before us. We, they are notified by a sheriff, just like a court thing, that they've been ordered to come to the meeting. It's, it's not a, it's not a voluntary thing like a notice of violation. We issued the cease and desist to Fran Hodges because he did not come to a meeting which he was invited to to talk about the disposal of, I heard from our zoning of our wetlands enforcement officer, happens to be the zoning guy too, that there was horse manure being dumped on the property and buried right next to his operation on Chalobes Road. Not on the parcel where his business is, but on a parcel that he owns across the stream, which is a vacant parcel. And there's other parcels he owns with houses on them and things like that. A cease and desist has to be issued within 10 days of, in other words, a meeting on a cease and desist has to occur within 10 days of issuing the cease and desist. So it's very legal. It's much more harsh than a notice violation. It's very rare that our commission issues cease and desist unless you don't show up. And I called Franny, left him a message. Franny knows me. Thirty years, Fran. Didn't call me back. After John, John Cody went to the site based on a complaint and talked to Fran, apparently Fran got a little, little frisky. And so I called Fran to say, just come to a meeting, which he didn't attend. And then I called him again and said, I don't want to get into a cease and desist, but if you don't call me back, that's where we're heading. He didn't call me back. So here we are. The allegation by the wetland commission is that Mr. Hodges is dumping horse manure on a property owned by him.
No.
Without a permit, never applied for a permit, can't cite that it's an agriculture activity because that requires wetlands approval based on recent court rulings. Actually, they're years ago. So you can't just say, I'm doing something agricultural, so I'm exempt. The court saw that as a problem, so that's no longer allowed. The commission needs to agree it's exempt. We, we didn't get any request for an exemption. The excavating and dumping occurred within 30 feet of a stream. Hundred foot is the buffer. Years ago, the commission allowed Fran 10 feet for a buffer only because he had things stored there. The driveway was pre-existing. But that didn't give him a right to just do things like dump manure within, by the stream because that could severely affect the stream's water quality. So that's the allegation. Commission issued a cease and desist. Our job now is to listen to Fran's side of the story and then decide where we go from here. So Fran, the floor is yours.
Yes, good evening to all of you, whomever is a Fran Hodges, our maintenance. Little bit confused, number one, the remark that Cody said I was a little frisky. I think that when I suggested that I thought he'd been storing material there for years. And that's when he turned on me. So Cody tends to be a little hostile at times and he instantly flared up and he was right. No matter what I said, I was wrong. And that's where that ended there. As far as you, Russ, you called me one time. I still have the message. The message was, again, not a very pleasant message. It was kind of like, and I didn't think anything about it. I, I let it go by and I figured, well, somebody would come back and say, we're going to have to do something different when nobody showed up. My bad. I assumed I was within my rights to continue to do what I was doing. And as far as excavating and burying stuff, negative. I will go over there with a shovel and anybody who wants to show up and watch me, I will dig it out. There is nothing buried there. It's surface, it's surface material about 10 to 15 yards that had been stored there for probably up to 10 years. I did bring in some, another 10 yards approximately to put on top of it or to mix with it. But there's no excavating. Nothing was dug out. And I want to say EverSource had come by and cleared all the brush out of there prior to that, about a month earlier. And I said, well, it looks like a good spot to put in some catnip, rhubarb, and some other odds and ends that I won't be able to put in the garden that I have across the other side of the stream, which I have every year for the last 30 years off and on, had a garden there. So I've just put an extension on the other side. And when I measure, I don't know whose measuring stick is being used or where you're taking your high water from. But I measure 65 feet and not 30 feet from the wetlands. So again, I disagree with that. And if you want me to have Brian Neff come over and engineer the distance on that, on his map, it says 30 feet is my buffer zone because I do have the map here in front of me. So I, but like an idiot, I assumed that I was within my bounds to do what I was doing, especially because it was a garden that I was being put in that I was actually hoping to slowly increase and decrease the amount of commercial type stuff that's going on here. And one thing that would help would be the garden, like when I cleaned out the property up there. I moved the dumpster out of the way, took the trailer out of there. That storm took down a bunch of trees up there, as you may have all known. Several of them blew onto my, one of two of my trucks down there over the period of time. So I've been clearing it up to make it look better in general and planting trees to go along with it because it's classified as a tree lot. So kind of that's where I'm at. If I've done something that radically wrong, I'll pay the price. And what we got to do to clean it up, I certainly have no trouble. But there's misinformation going on here and some of the temperament that Mr. Cody comes around with, he's got to temper himself a little bit. I mean, admittedly, if somebody throws a stone at me, I'm not going to stand there and wait for the second one to come at me. So maybe I did react in the same way he reacted.
Okay. That's why there's a, that's why there's a hearing.
And as far as, as far as being, as far as being invited, excuse me, being invited, you called me one time, Russ, unless I missed the message. And I was never invited to a meeting of any sort. I was not asked to go to a meeting. And that's where the confusion is here too. I was certainly, Russ, have I ever not shown up at a meeting? Ever?
No, that's why it surprised me.
Right. Name one time. No, it surprised me when you said that, when I just heard this for the first time. There's just.
Why didn't you call me back? You're right. I'm looking at my notes. I only called you once.
Yes, you did call me.
Yeah.
Because you were yelling. You yelled and it just sounded like Cody again.
No, I didn't yell.
You want me to play the message back?
That's how I talk. That's how I, I'm Italian. I'm proud to be an Italian. That's how I talk. I'm very passionate. And Greg Carver once said, people don't understand our passion. And I get that. I wasn't yelling. I was upset that you didn't come to the meeting. I was upset that you put stuff there that Mr. Cody said you ignored calls from him. I was upset that you seemed to be ignoring the commission. So that's fine. Well, that's why we have this cease and desist meeting to figure out what the facts are and act on the facts. Simple as that. You were never given a buffer zone that allows you to put manure, which could cause major bacterial damage to groundwater in a stream.
You keep saying manure. If I was bringing a thing of it to you and showed you what you're classifying as manure, you would laugh and say, this is mulch and/or hay. The manure content, this is about zero.
John, you want to?
Yeah. Thank you, Russ. John Cody, enforcement officer. We want to go backtrack to quite a while ago, actually. In 2017, Fran got almost an identical infraction for digging in the identical spot. So he knows the boundary in that area. Now, when we jump forward to this manure incident, Fran's allegations that I was rude and all that stuff are completely false. I left when Fran started dropping the F bombs. But back to the manure, the state went there and did an inspection on that site, which we just got the, from an FOI report, the the results of that inspection. Eugene McGillis went there and identified it as manure. He did come back and say it wasn't substantial enough of a digging for them to pursue that, but they did see other infractions at his site that they are contemplating pursuing on that. So the facts are what they are. It is manure. He was digging it there and putting it there. Fran's original reason for putting it was a rose garden. So that is interesting that that changes all the time. But back to the original, he had a violation in 2017. State verified it. Eugene McGillis, it's all there. Pretty much sums it up.
What, what deep violations are there now? Are there any? You said that. You didn't see this as a problem, but there were other issues that he.
Yeah, Fran's, he's, he's violating a court order about storing containers and running an illegal transfer station. Deep has been there numerous times, both there and his Washington house. Each time's been justified. Each time it's been positive. It's continues non-stop, but that's a separate issue. This is the wetlands manure concerned.
Right. Are there, are there dumpsters stored on that, on the subject priority that we're concerned with?
Oh, yeah. Actually, just yesterday I drove by, took a picture and sent it back to the state, along with some of the FOI requests that I received from them, confirming that he is continually violating court orders.
Okay, those court orders aren't our issue, but what is our issue that you're confirming that the state concerns its manure, but it's not substantive?
Yes, Eugene McGillis went there, looked at where it was dug up. It wasn't.
Saying dug up, it's not dug up.
Fran, Fran, I run meetings. Very right, very right. So that means no interrupting somebody else. That's not how we do it. So John, would you continue? And then Fran, you'll have your say. You don't need to interrupt.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Well, Eugene McGillis went through, says there was digging, but it wasn't substantial enough for Deep to pursue that. If you go back and look at the photographs that I submitted, you'll see that the stump, a large stump was overturned where the manure was placed, and now the stump is upright. Are they available? They?
Hey, John, question for you for clarification. What the, when Deep was there, was that recently that they found manure there or is this an old?
Yes, I believe that was Monday.
Okay.
Was it Fran Monday? There was just, just the other day. Julie, I think they, worst, they were submitted. I don't know if they were put in last week.
Well, that's all right. We should all go look at this with our own eyes.
Well, I have, if you don't have them, I, I have in the office. That's, that's for sure. Before and after, because we had two complaints, actually. The, the secondary complaint was when he was excavating after the last meeting, which pretty much set the cease and desist order in full swing.
I would just like to, this property slopes all towards the stream, correct?
Correct.
So even if he was outside of the 100-foot setback, it would have the potential to wash into the stream?
Definitely, yes. And actually, when I went there the first time, I told Franny, please put some silt fence, hay bales, anything along the line to put, to stop that, any possibilities, and refused.
And was that done?
No, no, of course not. No.
Okay, Fran, go ahead. You had something to say.
Number one, as I said in earlier in the meeting, the stump that he's referring to was one of two stumps that fell onto that parking lot. Two of the large trees, which probably measure about 100 feet, maybe 85 to 100 feet tall, landed in that parking lot and I cleaned them up. The one stump that is presently there, after I cut the tree, it tipped itself back up again, which if you know anything about cutting trees, oftentimes that happened. There's no manure, no shit, nothing buried underneath that at all. If there is, it might be maybe a worm or something like that due to warm weather. And furthermore, that's not even on Triple R's property. That belongs to Rock Grace. That's a totally different piece of property there.
Let me ask you this, Franny. Do you, do you provide dumpsters for people to put horse manure in?
Oh, yes. We've been doing.
And where do you, where do you bring that material?
99% of it goes to Nemoford Farms. And occasionally a customer of mine in Brookfield will take it for his gardens.
Okay.
But 90% of it goes to the Milford Farms. We took a load there today, came out of Washington. We're constantly going to Nemoford Farms and we have a place, like I said, in Brookfield that takes it. And there used to be a few other people in town that would take it, which is great for gardens because it's more of a mulch than it is a, if you know horse people, they spend more on their dang mulch than they, you know, they're just tremendous.
Well, here's the, here's the thing, Fran. That's because the wetland commission for the last 10 years has been proactive requiring them to put their horse manure, cow manure, or whatever it may be, into a dumpster and taking it off-site if they don't have a safe place to put it. Now, I have to state for the record, I happen to be the consultant for New Milford Farms.
Yeah.
I inspect New Milford Farms. I review everything that comes in there. And I will go into the record to see if you're on, because they have to write down everybody who comes in there, what they dumped. I don't remember seeing your name or RR, but I'll go back and check. But I think, I think whether that's real or not doesn't matter to me for this cease and desist. What matters to me is to stop all dumping of manure, soil, mulch on that property. That's what I'm looking for. That's what, how we solve the problem. I also know that you say it's a tree farm parcel, which you told that to the commission when we approved you to put trees there. And there's a couple of trees there. I met them. A bunch of trees were planted, little trees. Your father used to have a tree farm there. I remember it very well. But I also see dumpsters springing up. I, I don't know if dumpsters grow out of the ground, but I don't like the fact there's dumpsters there because to me, that's an expansion of your business and you're not allowed to expand your business. So you need to stop what you're doing or the wetland commission will take this to the nth degree. It needs to stop. That stream absolutely needs to be protected. It's a Class A stream. We can't tolerate these things. I don't care what your excuses are, but obviously Deep says it's manure. That bothers me. So why are you bringing manure there? The plant roses? You know, Fran, everything you do is being watched by Deep, by the town, and by your neighbors. I'm quite frankly sick of this stuff. So if you're going to go in there with an excavator and start digging within 100 feet of the stream or the pond, it would be incumbent upon you to use that smart brain of yours because you, you're not an idiot. You're a smart guy. You called yourself an idiot. No, you're not an idiot. You're smarter than a lot of us. But, but the problem is you think we're stupid. That's the problem. And we're not stupid. We're dedicated to what we do and we're very passionate about it. So yeah, I can leave you a call. It sounds a little rough. If you can't take the roughness, then don't violate my, our wetland regulations. Don't do it. Stop. Get your dumpsters out of there. Don't bring any soil in there. You want to plant a garden? Come, call me. Call me. Explain to me what you want to do. We'll approve it right there. No meeting. But this has got to stop. It's, it's, it's this round and round thing that I'm quite frankly, tired of spending my time on it. It's not fair to me or anybody on this commission. Needs to stop. And that's all I want on this cease and desist. Stop. Stop what you're doing. Stop bringing material in there. Get your dumpsters out of there. That, that's not a use. You're allowed, you have no permit to store dumpsters by the wetland commission, which by the way, you probably need. But we're not going to make a big deal out of nothing. So I hope you hear me. And I'd like to hear from other commission members whether they agree with me or not. And if you don't, please, I'm not the commission, you are.
I, I agree. I agree, Russ, but I'd like to know what's going to happen with the material that's already been placed there. And if it is remaining there, that it needs to be erosion control needs to be put between it and the, and the stream. And the fact that you mentioned 100-foot buffer because of the grade down to the stream that, so if 100-foot buffer is reason for Fran to think dump stuff 100 feet away from.
Somebody's knocking dishes around. Could you, could you mute your mic?
Yeah, I think that's coming from Margaret. Could you please mute?
Sorry. I changed machines and I forgot to mute.
It's okay.
I'll do it now.
Yep. So just to make it clear, many years ago, I think I had hair and it was brown back then. Franny basically was parking cars over there for his employees. And we agreed to allow him to do that. So we gave him a 10-foot, as long as he maintained a 10-foot buffer between where the cars were parked and the stream. That's now turned into, I have a right to store stuff there. I have a right to dump stuff there, to plant roses and rhubarb and clean it up. And that's not the fact. And if Franny misunderstood, fine, then let it be tonight that you understand that you're no different than anybody else. State law, Roxbury regulations, 100 feet. Every town has a different buffer. Ours is 100 feet, 200 feet from the shiitake. So you don't, you can't do anything new and claim you have a 10-foot buffer because that's not what we agreed to way back then. We, and we could take that away if it keeps getting abused. We're not here to hurt your business or hurt you at all, but we spent a lot of time protecting wetlands in the town of Roxbury. And we're not going to let manure and stuff be put anywhere near that stream.
So Russ?
Yes, Sue.
My concern is like we're having, having warm weather, the snow's melting and we put the cease and desist in, but that there's going to be some sort of protection for the stream? Now that we're getting into a few days of warmer weather?
Yeah, when we, when we make a motion, we're going to motion that he puts up silt fence and hay bales all along the stream.
Okay.
Russ, John Cody, just for the record, Fran's been in violation of 14 NOVs and two cease and desist orders from the court and from the state. I just got an email from an FOI request that I put in. I think there's an additional five NOVs that he's still in violation of. And I certainly would encourage the members of the wetlands to go on to the other side of the stream and take a look to see if there's anything there that they may have concern with.
Have you done that, John? Are you not allowed on Fran's property?
I'm not allowed on Fran's property. Deep has been there multiple times. I do recall one time where Fran actually had a trench dug going into Thannbrook so he could drain the sludge from his property into it.
I think we did
Yeah.
resolve that issue as a wetland.
When Gene got his first inspection there and was surprised.
Fran, would you let me on your property to inspect that?
Russ, I would love it if you'd come on my property and discuss this face to face and see even the profa, photography of the land does not pitch towards the stream. 90% of that parking lot has been flat for many, many years. And, and where I measured, which I figured would be about the highest the water would get was a maple tree that had been growing next to the town drain there.
All right, Fran, I'll look at it. Look, it'll be good to see you.
Yeah.
If anything, it'd be good to see you. I'll look at it.
Because there's a lot of stuff.
Explain it. I'll look. If there's issues.
Remember, remember when I was clearing the tree lot up there and you said to me, Fran, you're getting close to your buffer zone? And I said, I know, Russ, and I stopped clearing immediately because I figured I was within the 25 or 30 feet. This is a conversation that you and I had a couple of years ago. And that's confusion when we talked about that, being an idiot. And I'm saying.
You're not an idiot, Fran.
What I'm saying, being ignorant to the laws that you're presenting in front of me today are not what I remember because when we talked about 15 or 20 feet and I used to store rocks over there. In fact, I still have rocks there. I still have material there that I used for years in my business. And when I got my permit years ago to do that, it was okay. And incidentally, with that drain, the state came out, two young ladies came out and walked my property very profusely and looked at everything on the property and my property next door and the Rock Grace property and were totally satisfied with everything I was doing. The only thing they were disappointed in, and they said it out loud, was that the town of Roxbury is dumping their town road water into the pond. And I said, that's just the way it's been since 1975 and I'm sure it's not going to change. We went on our way.
Well, you could show me that too and we could solve a lot of issues. That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
I'm not here to bang anybody or anybody willing to cooperate. The commission has always cooperated back.
Sixty, 63 years and all of a sudden,
Yeah.
I'm the most hated guy in the town of Roxbury. And if I had the money, I'd get the hell out of here.
Well, I still love you, Fran.
Yeah. But you know, I kind of believe you, Russ, in a weird way, I believe you. And I think if we can stand next to each other and actually talk, come over to my property across the street, discuss it, would you, as far as? come over to my property across the street, uh, discuss it, would you, uh, as far as all these violations that, uh, Cody's looking for? Uh, I mean, as far as Eugene goes, he's test, he runs around all my properties. There's no violations on any of the properties. As far as here, when he came here that day, I wasn't here. I was out running cans myself. Uh, I got noth- no call from him. There was nothing here on the ground or anything that would have made him think that I was doing something illegal.
Believe me, Fran, the state works so slow, it's frustrating. So don't believe it. You might get something a year from now. So anyway, let, let's you and I meet. Um, I'd like another me- member of the commission to come with me so that there's no he said, she said. Um, who on the commission would like to come with me?
I have no problem with anybody. If Cody wants to come along, I find that acceptable. I just don't want people on my property when I'm not here. That's the only thing I don't want, because I have a secretary that works nights here.
Understood. Me and John, come then. Me and John, I'll come. Good. All right.
That's perfectly fine with me, and then we can communicate. You can, I'll take a shovel over there and verify that anything that I've done over there, it was done in good faith. And actually, I, I was, I was gonna plant roses there, but I changed my mind. I'd always wanted to have rhubarb. It was my dad's favorite pie, so I talked to my girl and we talked about putting rhubarb next door. So that has been a change of plans as far as, but I still may plant roses or if I can. What I'm trying to do, Russ.
Bar blind.
Just let's, let's understand one thing. My objective and anybody on your commission that's driven by my property for the last three years would be misguided and misguiding people around them to say that my property up there hasn't looked better since I bought it. Including CLMP or Eversource when they came down through and Apollo was knocked out.
Fran, I, I got you, Fran. Fran, I got a big, long meeting after this.
Okay, yeah, you guys go, go ahead and do your thing.
We need to end it. So, um, anybody else on the commission have any other questions, concerns, recommendations?
I'm good. For now.
Would other commission members please drive by, take a look in, uh, so that on the meeting on the twenty, twenty-third? I believe. Um, is it the twenty-third Tuesday, our regular meeting? You know, Julie, you got a calendar?
The twenty-third would be Tuesday, March twenty-third.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so Tuesday, Tuesday, March twenty-third, um, we, we will put this on the agenda. Uh, and we will discuss, you know, the sidewalk and how we could all come to a conclusion.
Ed, Russ, John, if any members want me to forward any emails that I recently received or old ones, I'll more than happy to photograph.
You should, John, no matter what, including pictures.
For the sidewalk, I, I can show you a boatload. You'll love it.
Okay. Great. Anything else, Fran? You're good?
No, no. Look forward to meeting you and just pick a time and give me a call and we'll set it up.
All right. I, I need to look at my, my work calendar.
I start at like four thirty in the morning and I run until five or six at night. So anytime.
I'll cont- I'll contact you tomorrow when I get into my office and could see my work calendar.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I thank everybody on the commission.
Okay, Fran, hang in there.
And stay safe, please.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to application twelve dash twenty, number two by the Woods Roxbury LLC, two oh six North Street and two oh three North Street, AKA noted as parcel B authorized on behalf of North Street South LLC. Regulated activities associated with a residential six lot subdivision on sixty-four acres. I will see Rob, Andy and Sue for this. The others on the commission could ask questions during these deliberations. But you, once we make any kind of motion, you really can't, um, say another word. Second, nobody from the public is allowed to speak. The commission is not allowed to accept any other new information. Uh, that ends it, that end it when the public hearing end it. The commission cannot ask engineers or any, anybody else, any other questions. Uh, I believe we could ask Gail questions because she's our attorney and she is online. Um, and therefore, let's get into deliberations and possible vote on application twelve dash twenty, number two.
Russ, just for the record, I'm stepping down.
Right. John, John is, John Smolika is stepping down, uh, as he has for everyone. Uh, we have Olivia, Lenora, Sierra, uh, as our alternates who again could listen to questions or could ask questions as we go along. So, uh, let's deliberate.
Before we get started, Russ, I've, I've got a question, maybe a clarification that I'd like Gail to make. And that is the, the standard of, um, proof here, as I understand it. Um, we, well, maybe Gail can explain it. Can we, do we consider a likelihood of damage? Or do we have to believe that the damage will occur?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello. Uh, first of all, I need to correct something. After the close of the hearing for deliberations, al- alternates may not, and people that aren't seated may not, uh, participate.
Oh, I heard something. Good.
Yeah, we have a, we have some court rulings that say it's like the jury, the whole jury's there.
Right.
But once, once we start the deliberations, uh, the second thing is that it standard is substantial evidence. Um, and it's, um, it's activities that are likely to have, uh, an impact or a harm. And there's, uh, the factors that you're looking at, uh, have, uh, different levels of proof. So one of them is if you are just, um, looking at your six factors that I think all of you have that are in your regulations and are in the state.
Put those up, please. The six factors. Thank you. Sorry, Gail.
That's okay.
Can everyone see that now?
Yep. Criteria for our decisions under ten point two of our regulations.
Yeah, these, these factors are not only just in your regulations, they're also recited uh, not quite, but almost verbatim in the state statute. And that state, state statute says you shall consider these factors. Um, so on applications that have a public hearing based on a significant impact or significant activity, uh, the commission is looking to see whether there are feasible prudent alternatives that would, um, be able to, um, make it, first of all, I guess, let me go back. Uh, under, under, uh, ten point two B, you're looking to see if there's feasible and prudent alternatives that would cost less or no environmental impact. So Andy, I think when we're looking at less or no environmental impact, no means none in that situation.
Right.
Um, when, when courts look at this, they look to see if there's substantial evidence in the record. So they look to see if you have facts in the records, just support what you're, what you're saying about the impacts. Um, in this case, because the public hearing was held, because you have a, um, uh, because of significant impact classification at the bit, beginning of your proceedings. Uh, if you'll roll down a little further, uh, on the standards and criteria. Can we do that?
Yes. Let's see.
You just need to go down. Okay, you can, uh, we, we're looking at ten point three, so it's a little bit further down. Uh, in a case of where you have a public hearing and a finding that the activity may have a significant impact, which you did, you, you may not issue the permit if you find on the basis that a feasible prudent alternative does not exist. So if, if, if you've got an alternative that's better and causes less harm, there's a lot of case law about what that harm has to be. Uh, some courts have said that you're looking for um, adverse impacts or substantial adverse impacts to the wetlands that are not speculative. That there's, there's information that shows that they will happen. Uh, the Riverbend case and some of the, 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 the general, uh, important cases have always criticized commissions that are looking only at speculation. We speculate that if somebody's doing something near in a wetland, it must cause a problem. That's speculation. You have to actually have evidence in the record that shows that it really does cause a problem. And that's the reason why you had so many engineers, uh, present at your, at your meetings. In wetlands, as opposed to other kinds of land use applications, the technical part of it is really important because the courts have ruled that some of these determinations as to impacts require technical expertise in order to, um, understand, uh, what those impacts are. Uh, you have a lot of information to discuss tonight, so I'm not gonna take a lot longer with it. But you need to have facts that back up that there is actual harm and not just speculation. And that's the standard the courts look at. Um, I might point out, if you roll up, uh, roll up a little bit, that the first of these, the first of these factors is very general.
Roll up. All the way.
So to prevent her, okay. The, the environmental impact and of course, environmental impact in your case means to wetlands and watercourses. And you're looking at the, the effects of the, on their capacity to support wildlife, uh, fish and wildlife to prevent flooding, all of those sorts of things. So those are sort of the general sorts of things. The second one we talked about, you look at short term and long term impacts. So when you look at construction activities and what is being done to protect the wetlands during construction, that might be short term. Long term was a lot of what was happening in this application had to do with the maintenance of the, uh, stormwater basins and the, their ability to effectively protect the wetlands over the long term. Uh, so that short term and long, long term is there. The irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetlands. Uh, in this case, uh, there's a small amount of direct impacts, but most of the impacts had to do with stormwater. Uh, and were indirect impacts. Our courts look at, uh, we have a famous case called Kuech, K U E A C H. And in that case, the, the court looked at the fact that if you have an in the upland review area, and I never call it a setback, it's a upland review area. It's a regulated area where there's a likelihood of impact on the wetlands or watercourses. In that area, the, um, that you could have an activity that is just as damaging to the wetlands as if it were directly in the water. So or, or in the wetland itself. So our courts have said that anything that's in that area, whether it's a hundred feet above or even above a hundred feet, if in fact, there's a likelihood that it will impact the wetland resource or the water course, uh, you definitely have a consideration there and you have jurisdiction to, to take a look at that. And you, you, you should take a look at that. Um, minimizing pollution, uh, the definition of pollution, by the way, under the Wetlands Act includes anything that, uh, it includes stormwater drainage into a water course where sediments and so forth, uh, may flow into that water course. Um, so I'm not gonna take much more of your time, but, um, is that helpful, Andy, to, to understanding what you're gonna do?
Very much so, Gail. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that was great. It's, it's good. The commission reminds itself of the six reasons, the six factors that we make a decision on. And having all the testimony before us, all four of us have attended all meetings, public hearings. Sue did miss one, but she went back and read the tape, saw the, saw the Zoom. Thank God for Zoom. And all four of us were also a part of and voted on to deny the previous eleven lot subdivision, which was really twelve lots because the lot with the White House was gonna stay, um, as a separate lot.
Remember, Russ, I was not part of that vote.
Rob was not part of that vote, but Rob was at all the meetings, right, Rob?
Yes, I was.
Yep, that's important. Rob did step down because he had a business relationship with the engineer on that project. He does not have a business relationship with Dymar, the, or Land Tech, the engineers on this project. Or with Steve Drinkas for that matter, I don't believe. Um, you don't, you Steve, do you, Rob?
I did probably thirty years ago.
Okay. Yeah, are we that old? Geez. Okay. Um, so Julie, why don't you put up the map of the site? Sometimes it takes time.
It does take time when you're going back and forth between PDFs and a Word document. So just let me know when you can see it.
Yep. Could you zoom in a little?
There, is that better?
Um, that's good, I think. Anybody wanna zoom more or are we good? You good?
That's good.
All right. So to go back, to refresh your memory, this is a six lot subdivision on sixty-four plus or minus acres. Four plus or minus acres is wetlands. The disturbance area is two point five, two point four percent, somewhere in that range. The, the geology of the site is such that it is a hillside. There is a swamp or wetland, uh, with vernal pools. I believe all those differing opinions in the testimony. Up on top, uh, that vernal pool and swamp drain out and two different, uh, separate intermittent streams, neither of them are perennial. And they go across the street, cross, they cross Route one ninety-nine and existing culverts to a wetland on the other side of the street, which we're familiar with because we approved two driveway crossings and two homes on fifty acres over on that side. The wetlands on the west side are much different than the wetlands on the east side. The wet, they're geologically, uh, very different. Um, as the, as the testimony will show. Um, we did have some people say that the wetland commission wasn't looking at subsurface water. In fact, there was a editorial or a letter in Voices Today saying that wetland commissions don't look at subsurface. That's factually untrue. That is not true at all. In this case, uh, the commission did, does and always does looks at all water factors when, uh, evaluating an application. And by, by that, I mean, um, the aquifer underneath and how the aquifer underneath could be affected. And, um, we, we always look at that. And that's why we, we did listen to a blasting expert who provided testimony on that fact. And we, there are, uh, facts in the record that show that we did ask questions about the aquifer. Um, there is no aquifer, so to speak, in the upper, uh, soils of the site because there's high bedrock. Um, so the feature you see there, um, is the geology of a, a bowl in the bedrock that creates a swamp and it drains out in two different directions. And there's no aquifer associated with it. Where on the other side, that is an aquifer. It's an aquifer recharge area where it's recharging the aquifer in that area. And we did look at runoff rates and other things that we, we heard testimony about runoff rates and how it could affect the wetlands across the street. We didn't just look at the site. We looked at both, uh, sites on both the east and west of Route one nine, one ninety-nine. Um, so with that, I'll start with Sue on your opinion. Um, just to go back, um, we're not, we, we shouldn't vote tonight unless you want to. Any member could say, could make a motion. You can make a motion right now and, and I can't stop you. Um, but I think the plan is to talk one another, get this consensus of what we're all feeling about this. What our concerns are, we could ask each other questions. We just can't ask anybody else but Gail, what our concerns are. And then either we could ask Gail to make a motion for approval, make a motion for denial, or make a motion for denial. And then either we could ask Gail to make a motion for approval, make a motion for denial, or make a motion for both. And then next meeting, if, if, if we so choose, we could vote on a motion. That way it's all written, and this is no different than what we did on the 11 lot subdivision. We had the motion all written up so the commission could read it and understand it. And because there's, there's things we need to talk about tonight about conditions. Remember, we're not going to do any conditions that, that the intervenor may have some issues on because they're not able to, to speak to conditions. But we will have, I would assume, conditions on bonding and other straightforward things which really the intervenor has already had the opportunity to review and comment on. So Sue, do you want to start, or would you, would you rather, would, who would like to start?
I, I mean, I can make a, I, I don't, one of us has to start. I mean, I guess I can say a couple of things that I'm concerned with, even though listening to, you know, the wetland experts and the engineers with their, what they had to state. But I guess, well, I guess what's still lingering is that I am debating about that, the fact that there, that, that length of that driveway and the three driveways still are bugging me. Because I, I'm still debating about the fact of that there could be a feasible
Somebody's upset.
Yeah. I'm going to say I'm gonna have somebody else make comments. I'm going to get Brian to tend to the dogs right now, sorry.
Okay, but Sue. Is that, your major concern is the three driveways and the long driveway up?
I think so. Yeah, that is probably my major concern. I mean, I have to say, I have to thank Gail. I thought that there was a lot of time put into reading over her, the declaration that she sent to us. I do have a couple of questions. I don't know about as far as, who oversees the funding on that?
That's a question for Gail because I know the answer, but it's a legal question.
Okay. Gail, I just was curious on that. Who, who oversees the, the funding for that? And I guess who would manage that?
The lot owners actually oversee it. The, that, when, when, when title is transferred, it's going to take subject, if, if you were to approve this and use that type of declaration, the, the owners would take subject to that declaration that requires money to be put up into a fund. And, and so it's done not very differently than a homeowners association, although the applicant never, as far as I, I can remember on the record, and somebody can correct me, but never seemed to agree that they would create the homeowners association. So that what, what is happening here is something almost the same, which is it's restrictions, but it's just on the lots, instead of being on all the lots, it's on the lots that are affected by a connected stormwater train that goes through those lots and goes over to the other side. So the town, however, it's, if, if, from a wetlands enforcement standpoint, if there were a violation and those, those, and you were to approve this and require that they be maintained as is set out in the plans, if the, if that maintenance didn't occur, there would be a wetlands violation, like any wetlands violation that occurs. Secondly, that provides a little bit more process for the town to put these people on notice that even if it's not on the lot of one of the owners, if that lot is part of that connected train, then all the lots are impacted and all those lots could be leaned for the cost that it takes to bring the, the drainage facilities back into compliance. So it's, it's, it's not very different than buying into a, what we call a common interest ownership community in, in Connecticut, where when you buy in, you, part of the buy-in is that you're going to have to fund, fund, fund this maintenance and repair of these facilities.
Gail, didn't you tell me that homeowner associations are no longer allowed under, because the builders were able to get a line?
The subdivision, the subdivision statutes in 2011, when in 2010 and 2011, the bonding was changed in Connecticut, it doesn't affect wetlands so much as subdivisions and site plans and special permits and zoning, that only public improvements get bonded. And, and, and the wetlands does not have that restriction, number one, because what you're bonding is the protection of the wetlands. And those are many, many times are not public improvements. But that provision would not have, that statute would not have allowed the, the zoning commission to say to a developer, you have to have a homeowners association. But they could actually do the same thing that we're doing, talking about here, and that is say, but you have to have a mechanism to protect this, this, this facility where it's being shared on several lots. So you would have, you'd have an ability and to do this. And then, and also counsel for the applicant here conceded that they would, that, that they would agree to something that looks like that maintenance agreement that, that I put together, which is, as I think you, you people will remember, some of it was sort of lifted out of Greenwich and some other places, and some of it came from experience that I've had. It's a, it's a document that looks a lot like what a common interest community would do if you have one. But in this case, it's less lots that are involved.
Okay. Sue, do you have any other concerns that need to be answered?
Not right this time.
So bring up the six reasons why we make decisions or what we base our decisions on, Julie? If you could bring that back. Remember, our, our decisions are based on potential or impact of wetlands. And the courts have recently ruled that it's gotta be more than likely. That just saying it's a potential is not good enough. You have to listen to the experts. And if you believe that there is a strong likelihood that there's going to be an impact for a wetland impact, then, or if you believe that a feasible and prudent alternative exists, and as Mr. Smith stated on the record, you can't just say one exists yet. The commission has to say what that feasible and prudent alternative is. So we need to keep that in mind. Concerns are good and asking questions are good, but we have to keep focused on these six reasons and make sure that our concerns are directly related to the, to the realistic impact for, to the wetlands and nothing more. If you don't like a long driveway or shared driveways, or we don't have shared driveways, that's a problem. But if you don't like three driveways coming off the road, if there's no reason why, if you don't see an impact of wetlands for that, then, then you can't really, you have to be careful on how you vote. Now, one thing you brought up, Sue, which I, it's a good point is I would like to see the applicant go, go to planning and ask for a shared driveway, which isn't allowed right now, but is allowed as a waiver. What I'm struggling with is if we determine there's no impact either way, if, and we haven't determined that, I'm just saying, if we, if we determine there's no impact of wetlands either way, then I'm not sure that's a good thing to put in a motion. Although I'd, I'd like to see a, a shared driveway. It, it's less disruption. I'm still thinking about if that disruption, that less disruption really has any change in what, what the plan is now. So I struggle with that. On the long driveway, I don't have a problem with the long driveway. I, I've walked it many times. It only slightly goes into the buffer zone. I, I don't see how it could have an impact. The, the intervenor, and thank you to the intervenor, because the intervenor has spent a lot of money bringing good, good things to light. I, I hope the intervenor respects any decision we make either way and understand that, you know, we're, we have a lot of information we're struggling with just because we want to make the right call. That's all. We want to protect the wetlands, nothing more. But I mean, I guess as we go along, I, I would like to go through each one of these separately. You know, the environmental impact of the proposed regulated activity. And the regulated activity really is incursion, minor incursions to buffer zones on Lot 1, 30 feet into a buffer zone, and then there's a big stone wall there. And then on Lot 3 where it, it comes close to a intermittent stream. But the real regulated activity is all the stormwater that's generated, that will be generated and how that water is handled. So I, I've been thinking a lot about this. I've been asking, why can't this be handled on each lot separately? And I think at the last meeting, I got my answer and I liked the answer. The answer was that you could do each lot separately. It would be more disruption, more trees would have to be cut down. But Mr. Lancourt designed this to, to go with nature. And that's why you have to have three lots that have a, a trained stormwater system. Because he went with nature. He, he's not fighting nature on, on his, on his plan. So I, I think my concern about that was answered. My concern about a lot of what Mr. Trinkus was bringing up, I think was well, well debated by our own experts at Lantec. I'm choosing to go with Lantec on that because I think Mr. Trinkus on many occasions went over the top on his comparison to what could happen here, to what had happened at other, at other sites. Because I, I really looked deep into Mr. Trinkus's comparisons, and I agree with Lantec that it was way over the top. He was comparing apples to apples. Almost like, you know, the world's coming to an end, there's going to be a thousand year storm. And if, if there's a thousand year storm, everybody in Roxbury is going to be flooded, so it won't matter. As far as the feasible and prudent alternatives, the, the alternative to not do anything to conserve the land, I think if that was an alternative, there would never be a house built in Roxbury. So that alternative kind of scares. I do know, because I was involved before this application was submitted and after the appeal period of the dial application, where there was nothing before me, I was involved with trying to preserve this property. I, I was willing to go to the Board of Selectmen to try to use some of the land acquisition fund money, a, a good sum, four to 500,000. But I would not go before the Board of Selectmen unless there was a deal between the different land trust. And I think Ms. Sloan tried to, to make that deal. But you know, the woods is a business. And, and the property was evaluated and it was assessed and, and and the land trust unfortunately came in with a number that was much less than the appraised value. So the letters from the land trust saying that they tried, they did, but I, I don't think that there was enough effort. I think there could have been a GoFundMe. I didn't hear of any drives in town to, to save this land. So when that fell through, I, I don't think the applicant at all didn't make a reasonable effort at trying to preserve the land. And they're not required to. So I don't think that's a, a really good feasible and prudent alternative. And I'd like to hear your, your, well, well, I'll go through the feasible and feasible and prudent alternatives that I've put a lot of effort in going back into the record, reading about it, doing research. So the next one, and Marjorie Samsky was chatting, hitting chats at the last one all the time. What about four lots? What about four lots? And I, I, I thought about that. I thought about four lots. Well, we have Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 5 and Lot 6. Gets rid of the long driveway, gets rid of probably some of the blasting that's needed for Lot 4. But I'm looking at the impact, the impact of the proposal that's before me. Quite frankly, I think it's over engineered. I, I think the initial proposal that was submitted to us seemed to me like it was a pretty reasonable approach. It was a feasible and prudent alternative from 12 lots. It certainly was better than 12 lots. And I say 12, again, the proposal was 11 lots plus an existing lot. And this is six lots total. So I, I looked at four lots and I don't see the difference in impact between four lots and six lots. And again, this is the commission, I'm looking forward to the commission telling me I'm wrong or right or whatever. But you know, when we say there's a significant activity, we have to say what that is and can't say a feasible and prudent alternative exists if there's no impact by the actual application before us. So I thought about other alternatives, and one of them was to go back to the road. Because if you look at our decision from the last application, we did say, get rid of Lot 6 or, and get rid of Lot 7 or Lot 3, come back with a, with a nine lot subdivision that meets Planning Commission road standards. That, that application required a waiver from the Planning Commission to extend the road 1,500 feet. And that engineer needed to extend it to, to have a cul-de-sac because you got to have a turnaround on the flat area. But he happened to throw a lot up there just for, for the heck of it, and that bothered me. That last application used the wetlands for stormwater treatment. It used, it actually used the wetlands. They were proposing to use the wetlands. This, this application doesn't do that. I think when they went back and looked at it, they realized that there's no way to put a road in without using the wetlands for stormwater renovation. So they came back with a six lot subdivision and Steve Trinkus wisely, because Steve is a quality engineer, I'll say that. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Trinkus. I, I just, my only problem with Steve is it depends on what side of the, the aisle he's on. I've seen, I see him fight one way or the other and it, and sometimes I wonder, you know, when does the science really matter? Where you could say as an expert, you know, this is, this application is fine. But Steve did say that the, the, the way that Dymar was looking at this wasn't the right stormwater calculations, it was the wrong method. So we went to Lantec and Lantec agreed with Steve Trinkus and said, it is, although that method is okay, it's starting to be found that that method is underestimating today's storms and you should use the rationale. And you should use the rationale method, or whatever you want to call the method. And Dymar went back again, redid everything, realized that we need additional treatment across the street, across from lot one. I'm kind of bothered by the disruption across the street, not because of wetlands, but I don't really see the reason to put a pool over there. I think it would be fine with a level spreader so the water, it's level over there. So the water would level out and then naturally drain into the wetland. It's an aquifer recharge area. You know, on the other side of the wetland, on the west side, it's very sandy, gravelly, glacial cane terrace soils, we call them, and they're very, very pervious. And that wetland drains not to a river, not to a stream, but to the ground. And it actually recharges the aquifer. Basically, I feel the more water you could put over there, the better. As long as it's clean water that's properly treated of sediment. Because sediment has phosphorus and nitrogen in it. Even though nobody's putting it in, it's not from your lawn, it's naturally in soil. And when you stir soil up, that stuff comes out. That's why stormwater treatment is so important. So I looked at all these feasible and prudent alternatives. And I haven't made a decision because I want to hear everybody else. But I struggle to find the impact. Now, Mr. Klein stated, you know, after the applicant did everything that the intervenor basically recommended, other than a couple few minor things. I mean, Steve felt there should be a conservation easement on all the wetlands, which I don't agree with because I don't even agree with the conservation easement. Wetland regulations are very strong. We have the power to stop anybody from going into that swamp. But conservation easement is another level of protection. I'm okay with that. I just don't see the reason for it, especially with a wetland commission that's as shown tonight with the cease and desist. We don't really put up with much. We're not very, we're cooperative, but we're good about watching our wetlands around here. But I struggle to see where the impact is. So Michael Klein did make two points that, and I, again, I really respect Michael Klein. I know Michael Klein from way back. I never worked with him, but I know his work. He said, it's too complicated, this application. It's too complex. It's, there's a better way. And I guess his better way is for four lots. But I don't see how the four lot thing works if you're going to do your drainage to nature's way. Because you'd still need a stormwater train. He says, what if the contractor doesn't do this right, doesn't follow the plans, builds it wrong? Well, in that case, we couldn't approve anything. No application would be approved by this commission if we use that feasible and prudent alternative. Because, yeah, contractors screw up, we get it. But we could put things in our motion to make sure that the contractor is managed by an engineer. Now, I do read in here that they want a third party engineer. And I got to say, I'm personally opposed to that because professional engineers are licensed. They could lose their license if they do things wrong. And DEEP requires that all permits get approved by a third party engineer. In other words, when I do a permit as Arcadis for a large landfill such as Beacon Heights landfill, I have to have a third party, not part of Arcadis engineer stamp it. And I'm opposed to it. Arcadis engineers are top notch. Why can't they stamp them? So, I mean, that's up to the commission if you want a third party engineer looking at this. But I think the best one to look at is the one who designed it because their stamp is on the design. So that's my feeling on this. I am for this application because it meets our regulations. It meets all six reasons that is in front of me. I think the applicant has gone way beyond, well, not way. They've responded to the intervenor's experts' recommendations. They have. And what bothers me is the intervenor's experts never once caved in and said, okay, you did that, that's good. It seemed to be, okay, you did that, what about this? That kind of showed me, I make decisions how people react to things. And that kind of showed me that they really were just trying to make this as hard as it could be instead of looking at it as a scientist and saying, this plan works. So we had to hire a third party, a third viable, well-respected consulting firm in Lantac. And Lantac's conclusion is, there's no impact. I think they've done a good job, Lantac, I think did a better job debating Steve Trinkus's things that Steve brought up. I think on that, if I was voting on a debate, I think Lantac won hands down on that. So I'm going with my expert, with the expert that we hired, Lantac, on their opinion on this application. And Michael Klein. I think Mike brought up some really good things and I thank Mike because I think a lot of the things that Gail wrote was because of Mr. Klein's recommendations. I know that the intervenor on the last meeting wanted a homeowners association. And I think we asked Gail to tell us what's the best way. And I think Gail did a great job of writing something up that I'm very comfortable with. And I'm going to go with our attorney as the expert to listen to her. I'm going to listen to her on the conservation easement that even though it doesn't meet our planning commission's regulations, let the planning commission decide that. So we asked for a conservation easement. They gave it to us. I think what they gave us is fine. If the planning commission isn't comfortable or would prefer their own regulations, then good. Because they could do that and then they upset us with that kind of stuff. You know, we talked about bonding and Gail did a good job of a construction bond. She wrote up a good thing for future maintenance and how that would work. I think the numbers are way too low. Gail just threw out numbers and we need to look at that. And I looked to Rob and Andy and Sue on that. I do think one thing missing is the, well, no, I mean, Gail took care of that. I think Rob brought up that there needs to be a long-term maintenance plan. So there's some protection that if it fails and these people, and the homeowners look up, like up on Good Hill Road, start arguing with each other, that the town doesn't get involved in it. Now, on Good Hill Road, people are arguing up there about drainage and the town hasn't gotten involved in it. The courts have, and we're totally out of it. But then again, wetlands aren't being impacted up there. It's totally a water on neighbor issue. So it's a different issue. All in all, I'm going to look for, I'm going to ask, I'm going to vote in favor. I'm going to ask for a motion to vote in favor of this application because I believe it meets our regulations. My only concerns with this is that it's a little bit over engineered to me. And over engineering means a little more disturbance than what is really needed. But that is not what the applicant had first proposed. That's what the intervenor's experts recommended and our own expert agreed with that. I don't know where all this water is going to come from. I really don't, but I think a over engineered system is ten times better than an under engineered system. I think I'm confused by Mr. Trinkus and there's 2.4% disturbance here. But he has said in other places, and it is on the record, that anything 10% or under will not likely result in a significant activity. So I, you know, this could be appealed anyway. And I like applications that both sides are going to appeal whatever decision we make. Because one side or the other isn't going to respect what the commission has done here and how much work we've done to it. And that's fine. That's what America's all about these days. I don't know how, I would rather go to court with an approval saying that six lots on sixty-four acres with four acres of wetland, a 2.4% of disturbance makes a lot more sense than a denial to me. But I'm still open. I haven't made a decision because I want to hear you as the members. I wanted to set it up as to what I'm feeling. As you know, and you're probably all sick of hearing it, but I am an expert. You know, I'm a geologist with a BS and an MS in geology, and I've been doing geology for thirty years. I'm surprised that Margaret Minor doesn't know I'm a geologist and that I study groundwater and underground systems. And that for, if you look at our record over the last twenty-four years I've been the chairman or something like that, we've always looked at how aquifers may be impacted. In fact, as a show that we do that, when they wanted to put up the senior housing up there on Route 67, the senior housing project, we as a commission really wanted to know by putting in the wells, how it would affect the wetland, which is all around that property. And we required that they do pumping tests to prove that the wetlands, the aquifer that's associated with the wetlands on that site would not be impacted. So the Roxbury Wetland Commission has been looking at aquifers for a very, very long time. And on the record, I looked at the aquifers and how they would be impacted by this application. And quite frankly, the development is so sparse, so to speak. As sparse as the development is on Garnet Road. And I use Garnet Road as my guide. I don't see how there could be a significant impact to those wetlands, to the wetlands across the street, or to the aquifer that lies underneath. As far as blasting goes, Suzanne brought up blasting may impact her well. She was very concerned about that. So the applicant did bring in a blasting expert who was highly regarded in this area. And that expert told us there will be no impact. Now, I'm not a blasting expert, so I have to listen to what that expert said. The intervenor didn't bring in a blasting expert, but brought up issues to depth of ground, depth of bedrock, that there were other things. I didn't know the depth of groundwater where they were going to put bio retention basins. And all that, all that was debunked by this blasting expert and by Lantac. The applicant did go back out there, did do more testing. I believe a lot's been done to give me a comfort level, but I'd like to hear what you have to say. Andy?
I was just going to say, well, I guess I'll go. I'm conflicted over this one. It's a beautiful piece of property. I really think it should be land trust property, but that's got nothing to do with what we're doing here. I listened to all the experts. I'm somewhat concerned with the complexity of the drainage train on lots two, three and four. But our expert, Lantac, said that there's no problem with it. There won't be an issue. So I thought long and hard about it and I think that you know, I think that I would probably vote to approve the application. I feel like I'd have to. I think they've met our regulations. You know, that's where it comes down to. Have they, the question is, have they met the regulations? And I think they have. Especially if we incorporate Gail's legal language into the motion. I don't think that we should have a motion and a vote tonight. I think that we should have a formal motion put together the way that we did on the previous denial before we approve. Or, you know, if we go that route. But, you know, I'm a lot less talkative than Russ is. So there's my opinion.
Sorry, Andy. Rob, you want to go?
Sure. Well, I, my view on this is that it's just, it's an extremely low density subdivision. You know, on the sixty-four acres, there's 1.6 acres worth of disturbance, which equates to like a two car garage on every acre. I am convinced through the information that's been provided to us by Lantac and the other engineers that there's going to be no long-term or short-term impacts on this property. No onsite or off-site impacts. I don't, I believe there will be no loss of wetlands, no pollution or damage to the wetlands. So I support this application.
Rob, at the last meeting, you had a concern about long-term construction or long-term maintenance and the bond for that. I can't really remember.
Well, it was just, it was just of the fact that, you know, if someone just decides they don't want to contribute to the maintenance or if the majority of the people don't want to contribute to it, then what happens? And I think Gail's addressed that.
What's your opinion on the amount of the construction bond?
Well, I think that, and maybe someone can refresh my memory on this, on the, that they were talking about a twenty, fifteen to twenty percent increase on what was proposed. And it was basically for erosion and sediment control. The temporary erosion and sediment control was not included. So I think, I think the total was 117. So we're looking at another, another twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars, roughly a twenty percent on top of that for the erosion and sediment control, divided by six is four thousand dollars per lot, which I think is adequate.
Yeah, that's the number I was thinking. Andy? Do you agree?
I do. You know, it always amazes me because I started building houses back in the nineteen eighties and I'm still kind of stuck with nineteen eighties prices. But everything I do today is way more expensive than that. I think, I think the hundred and twenty-ish number is probably adequate. It's a complicated site, but again, we're not disturbing that much land to begin with. I think really we should get an engineer or an excavator to weigh in on these numbers.
Mark Lo provided the applicant with the numbers. That's where they came from.
Okay, then.
And Dymar also reviewed them and agreed with the numbers. And they're the ones that came up with the fifteen to twenty percent in addition to that, I believe.
You mean Lantac reviewed Dymar's numbers, right?
Yes, they all, yes, they were in.
Yeah, you said Dymar reviewed them. I think Lantac reviewed what the applicant presented.
Well, Dymar reviewed. Well, Dymar reviewed Earth Artist Excavations' numbers, and then Land Tech agreed with them.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, Sparky's, Sparky knows the land here very well, probably better than most anyone. And having had a couple of engineers look at it too, I don't think we're going to come up with a more accurate number than that.
Suzanne, your opinion?
Well, actually, I think when I was talking about my concerns with the driveways, I should've, if the dogs weren't carrying on barking.
It's all right.
Because really, what that concern was, because with the whole, when I walked, initially walked the site with Andy and Mark, I thought that the way that everything was set up, like you had said, Russ, was reflecting the contours of the land better than what the, you know, previous application. But then when we got into the whole meetings and the engineers going back and forth, and I was starting to feel overwhelmed, not being in the field of building at all, having a really hard time trying to decipher when they started, you know, going back and forth. But I have to trust with Land Tech, with, you know, their final opinion on it, and I really don't see, if we're looking at our criteria, how, at least in my opinion, and I, you know, listening also to what my, Russ, what you had to say, and the other commission members had to say, that we could, you know, I wouldn't feel that I would have backing of why to deny it. I think, like I had stated before, that I thought Gail put together makes me more comfortable having the declaration. It might be, as you stated, Russ, like over, you know, over-engineering, but that's, like I said again, a little, my understanding is gonna be different than yours, so my comfort level, I have a comfort level there with the declaration. So I would probably, Hank, sorry.
The dog is voting for you.
Well, he's getting a lot of, I'm giving him a lot of leeway, he's sick, so he gets a lot of leeway. But what was I gonna say? So I, yeah, I don't think I would, you know, I think I would be, I wouldn't see where I would be voting against this application.
So you would be more for it than against it?
Yes.
Does the commission want Gail to write a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or
I think just a motion to approve, frankly.
I agree.
I agree, because I think from what we've all stated.
I agree. So Gail, you have your marching orders there. Any other comments?
I just had one, maybe this is like, isn't even necessary, because part of two of what I was going back and forth on this application was I didn't want the town to be burdened, and I, with expenses, is as far as if the, if this stormwater wasn't managed correctly, and even though, like you said, Russ, like Good Hill, that's a whole different ballgame, but we do see things that, that tend to come back to us. Darn, I lost my train of thought. But there was one thing here, we're in the declaration, Gail, I had a question for you for the satisfaction, the town's consulting engineer. I don't, do we have to, does it need to be specified in there that the developer will be paying for it? Because I guess that's my concern, is I don't wanna have an undue burden on the town financially or even manpower hours.
If I may, yes, and we can make clear that the developer pays for the consulting engineer. We don't have an on-staff engineer in Roxbury, so consulting engineer is why I use that term. But we can make it, we can make it clear, lots of wetlands approvals require a consulting engineer to look over the engineering. The other thing I wanted to say is, the way that declaration is done, the first step is the, you, this commission's gonna bond the construction, and that's all gonna be in place. And then the rest of the money that's put up is gonna be, under that declaration, is going to be for maintenance and repair. So it doesn't, you don't even get to the maintenance and repair if it doesn't get built correctly and signed off. So that's an important part of any, any resolution that you would make.
I wanted to discuss with the commission about a single driveway. About requiring the applicant to go to planning and ask for a waiver and have a shared driveway. We're changing our regulations soon, where you could have a shared driveway for 150 feet, regardless of wetlands or not. In general, allowed shared driveways for the first 150 feet to reduce the amount of driveways that go out on a road. Now, it's not a wetland issue, but it would be less disturbance scale. So would we, would we have the right to ask that, even though we're kind of leaning that there isn't an impact as the, as the application is before us?
I think I asked this last meeting, and I thought I got shot down.
Yeah. There, I believe the shared driveway is not just a subdivision requirement, but a zoning requirement. And if I'm correct, and if I'm not, I guess I should take a look, but the requirement is that the subdivision, the planning commission can't approve anything that doesn't comply with zoning. They don't have, they don't have an opportunity to waive. They can waive their own regulations based on the standards in those regulations by a very high vote count, but they cannot, a supermajority, but they cannot waive zoning regs. That takes the zoning board of appeals to do that, so.
And I thought we did this before in town, where we approved shared driveways because of a hardship or because of a wetland.
Yeah, there could be, it could be a basis for a hardship before the zoning board of appeals.
Well, that wouldn't fit here.
Yeah.
Russ, I believe we did that on 67.
We did, because the people's parents were very sick, and they, they needed a shared driveway, otherwise they would have to have another wetland crossing.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with it, but I assume that it went to the zoning board of appeals, is that correct?
Somehow it got approved.
Yeah, okay.
But wetlands approved it, and once it got approved by wetlands, I didn't really follow it. I see what you're saying, Gail, we really don't have to write, because it's not an environmental reason to make them go and do that. It'd be better for, maybe cost-wise, but it's really not a wetland issue.
There's two things that you can do, though. You're going to, not only are you going to decide this application, but a report is gonna go from you, which is usually your resolution, to the planning commission, that's required by statute and by your regs. So there's a report, and in that report, you could add words about the conservation, for them to look at the conservation restriction or easement. You could suggest that if there's an ability to get the appropriate approvals for a shared driveway, that you would like to see that, they'd have to come back and get a revision to their permit to allow that, but that's possible.
Anything else?
The only thing I'd like to add, and this isn't directly related to any resolution, is just a word to the new members. You know, I've been on this commission for something like 10 years, and this is the longest deliberation, longest-running application I've ever seen. Please don't let it scare you off.
Yeah, last year, well, before this application, I think we had six meetings during the year.
Something like that, yeah.
So we try our best, I appreciate the intervenor a lot. Corax has really helped the town to make a better, much better application. I mean, first of all, to deny the 11-lot subdivision, which had many, many issues. But, but this application, I believe, is much better than it was when it was first submitted, and I have to admit that has in a large part due to the experts, you know, including Marjorie Shamsky, who led that for the intervenor. It brought more things to light that made us look at this a lot harder than I think we would have. Like, I wouldn't have ever thought of getting a blasting expert involved, but I'm glad we did. I'm glad we, we did get a third-party engineer involved because they gave us good advice as to what the science is and what it isn't. It's all very complicated stuff, like Sue said, and so I think the decision has to be based on these six reasons in front of you, and which expert you believe more. And if you don't believe Dymar or the interveners' experts, then that's why we had to hire Land Tech. So, but I do wanna thank the intervenor because it did make this a better plan, and that means the wetlands are gonna be better protected.
Russ, I just wanted to add one other thing. You mentioned about not having a third-party engineer for inspections and sign-offs. I wanted to say that I agree with that, I think that the design engineer should be the one doing that.
Yeah, thank you. That's my experience. It's better to have a guy who designed it be the one who says, you know, okay, it's built, it's built to what I designed it, it's built to what you approved, and here's my PE stamp. So, so thank you, everybody. If that's it, anybody else have anything on the commission?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, go ahead. Andy, it's a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? See you on the 23rd.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Hey.